Item 3 is invocation and pledge of license to the flag. If you're able, please rise. This time I'll call Councilman Reverend Willie King to play the follow-up. For the invocation.
Goodbye, yes, Lord. By God, we come tonight, thank you for the minute blessing that you be stood upon us. And I pray now, Father, that you give us the wisdom and knowledge at the decision that we make tonight, Lord, that we move forward in City of Perry. We thank him, we praise him, and by his name we pray. Amen.
Item 4 is recognition presentations. Item 4A is recognition of some firefighters. Chief Parker has asked if we postponed this particular item until our next regular legislative meeting. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 4B is a recognition of Lieutenant Darrell Kitchens, 10 years of service.
Yes, sir.
Lieutenant Kitchens, would please come over.
It's great to see such a big crowd here to honor Darrell on his 10-year. It's on you, Darrell. But I do want to kind of recognize Lieutenant Kitchens tonight with his 10 years of service here with the City of Perry. You know, during his tenure with the Perry Fire Department, he's attained his bachelor's degree in fire administration. He's a paramedic. He takes care of all the city's fire hydrants. He actually has a book to account for every one of them, tests them, and all those kind of things. He keeps up with that for the whole department. He is a certified fire inspector. He takes care of fire inspections on his shift days. He also drives our antique fire truck in most of the parades that we do around town. And other than that, or more than that, Darrell is a great role model for our younger firefighters and somebody that they can truly look up to, and he takes pride in what he does, and he does a good job supervising our younger troops out there. So, we do want to recognize Darrell for 10 years of service, and if I can have his wife come forward, I'll let her pin on his 10-year pin. Because we know that nobody can do this job without the help and support of a loving wife, so. Thank her. Darrell, was there anything you'd like to say?
God, it's a pleasure to serve. I love Perry, my family loves Perry. We have all grown up here, and we've had a wonderful time since we've been here. It's just a real honor to serve this community, and I couldn't do it without my wife. She's got my back, and nothing goes smoothly without her, so it's just an honor to be here.
On behalf of Mayor, Council, and the House, thank you for not only for your service, but for your dedication, your commitment, and your vision for this department. It's obvious that you take seriously what you do for a living, and it's all recognized. And 10 years is a long time to do the same thing over and over and over again, and you have a life for it, you have a feel for it, and more than that, you know what's going on. Everybody in the department's got your back, and you have theirs, and the Perry Fire Department is second to none anywhere in the world, and I put y'all up against anybody. Congratulations, and thank you for the job you continue to do and keep us safe. Thank you for that engagement. Thank you. Item 5 is recognition for a candidate who wishes to speak to Council.
Mayor, Council, darling and gentlemen, I'm Perry Chamber. Just to remind you that next Thursday, the 28th, is our business after hours. We do have the children joining us. It will be up at Cherokee Mines Country Club, 5:30 to 7:00. We have a couple of our members going in together on that business after hours. Also, a little event coming up in about four weeks is our Dogwood Festival Hot Air Balloon Fest. We do hope that you'll join us in downtown. We appreciate the partnership of the Perry City Council. But a very special event on Saturday night at our Hot Air Balloon Fest. We are doing a military salute. I do hope that that is on all of your calendars. Just, we're going to have the 100-feet-tall American bald eagle. He will be flying by two patriotic balloons, and we will launch, weather permitting, our esteemed mayor, also Mayor Pro Tem, but as it is part of a military salute, they are allowing us to have a favor, and we're also launching some of our Robinsons Air Force Base command staff in those balloons. Again, it's just a salute to the military and the honor that we have them. So I hope that's on all of your calendars, as well as those that are joining us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to it. You're going to launch it, you are going to land it, that's right.
Yes, sir, weather permitting.
Somewhere close.
Somewhere close.
Anyone else want to speak to Council? Yes?
I'm Steve Bobble. I'm a traffic engineer with Wilbur Engineering from Newnan, Georgia. I've worked in this position 35 years, and 35 years is a very long time to do something like this. I'm speaking on behalf of the 72-unit multifamily development proposed on Macon Road. We did a traffic study last week, counted traffic for a complete day out there. We had 20 minutes volumes and 24-hour volumes, counted traffic on the existing Winslow Place apartment, developed special trip rates using that development, and at that time, it was 85 of 88 units was occupied. Developed trip rates from that and applied to the 72, the proposed 72-unit development. Did our capacity analysis and found that development produces about 591 daily trips. And the proposed unit, the proposed development, will produce about 504, 252 in, 252 out for the entire day. We did analysis on the peak hours, daytime peak hour when school was in, and the p.m. peak hours. Found out that everything was working at level service C or better, and with the development, we worked at level service C or better, with some term line improvements. And we identified those in the study that we submitted, and I think it's been submitted to the board. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak to Council?
I'd like to say something.
Council?
I'm Jack James, and I represent Cheshire. We had no idea that anything like this was going to be presented today. And we'll point out that the Georgia Department of Transportation does not recognize traffic counts that are done on certain times. There's Saturdays and Sundays, Mondays and Fridays, days when school is not in session and holidays, as I mentioned. This traffic count, if I got the count right and saw them out there, was done on a Monday, which is not an acceptable day for a traffic study to be done, for it to be acceptable for the Georgia Department of Transportation. So this is my understanding of when it was done and when I saw the items out there to count the traffic. So I would suggest that the traffic count is not a valid count that should not be used because it would not be recognized by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak to Council? Yes?
So that our equipment was put out on Monday, we counted on Tuesday.
Fourteen hours.
That's not true. That's not true.
We got it. We got it. That's enough. Would anyone else like to speak to Council?
I would ask that Council make a decision for the citizens, not the threats of a developer who's continuing to saturate and flood the market in Perry. I mean, it's just not necessary.
May I just put your name, miss?
Audrey Davis.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to Council?
Steve Hyer, one of six left and right. You've heard it before, I'm going to say it one more time. There's a 2,000-foot section in the city of Perry on a two-lane highway that currently has 361 multifamily units. Now you're looking to do 72 more. There is nowhere else in the city of Perry with a saturation level in that short a distance on a two-lane highway. There are on four-lane highways and three-lane highways.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes?
My name's Gordon Graham, I'm a 112 window mirror, also in Cheshire. You know, traffic counts being taken and presented, et cetera. Just on the way over here tonight, I don't know where each and all of you live. I pull in and out of that neighborhood every day. Sat there at 5:36 this evening, cars going back and forth. Very difficult to get out of there at 5:36 p.m. as the late evening traffic is going. Been a lot of discussion around Perry Middle School, Perry High School, what goes on. Jack just mentioned the validity of those counts, et cetera. Unless you live there and experience what we're experiencing, 72 more units is going to be impactful to us. The 160 homes that aren't built yet in the two subdivisions, there's extreme safety issues in the Cheshire subdivision with the traffic that's going to be generated through our neighborhood. I don't have young kids, a lot of young families moving into that neighborhood. I really hope that you're all taking into consideration the traffic, the safety issues, and we haven't even talked about the flooding. All legitimate issues, all evidence of why this place should not be in our neighborhood.
Anyone else?
I'd like to speak. My name's Tara McEngel, I'm a 19-year-old. I would just like to say that through this process, I feel like our neighborhood pulled together, and we were together every week for hours at a time doing this. We had very good resources. That's a fortunate aspect of our neighborhood. We had a very good legal resource. We had good project management. We had great neighbors who supported us. But there is no way that any general constituent in this town can fight the way that we fought by themselves. I really hope you guys understand the weight at which your decisions count. This isn't about money. This is about lives. This is about lives changing. This is about people's homes where our kids have celebrated Christmases, where we've had birthday parties, where we all get together and really enjoy each other, changing for good. There will be people that will be moving. There will be people that will not move in simply because now we've exposed stormwater issues. They're valid. We showed you pictures, you've seen videos. We've talked about the traffic. It's valid. It's an issue, and I don't know if somebody happened to be killed out on the road in order for matter the houses have to flood. Our home flooded four years back. We had $120,000 worth of, and it wasn't outside water, so our insurance covered it. It will not cover this. So I just ask, this is about the constituents, and I hope that that thought really resonates because I cannot imagine an area in this town or a small group of people trying to get together to come up against a situation like this without the resources that we have. And I feel like it has been an uphill battle.
Anything else?
I would. I'm Steve Carter. I just wanted to kind of go off what Tara was saying about the traffic and the safety. As someone who runs or has walks every day with my family out there, the neighborhood with the addition of Legacy, is that all those extra lots? I mean, the traffic in the neighborhood is going to be terrible. It's not, I mean, there's, I know they're saying that people aren't going to be coming through Cheshire in their cars, but that's not a guarantee. And I think, aside from the traffic out on the main road, in the neighborhood, it's, I mean, it's going to get bad, and for pedestrian traffic and everything, considering, like I said, those lots from Legacy that are going to increase the traffic in Cheshire, I'm just worried about the safety of pedestrian traffic too in the neighborhood, and like with the little kids and everything.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Phil Garner. I would just wondered if we could have all the residents here who are opposed to this develop and stand and show Council who we are. These are your constituents.
Sorry. My name is Andy Gentry. I live at 203 Emberness Drive, and I've been in Perry my whole entire life. Been in Cheshire since 1996 when my parents moved there. My kids grew up there. I built a house in the back of Cheshire, bought a house in front of Cheshire. So I moved, but I had left Cheshire. And I just hope y'all will do the right thing here. You know, I have a job similar to y'all's where you're in charge of a lot of people, and I know you've got a tough decision here, but you really need to think about the people. And that's what your job is, is to think about the people in this city and in this neighborhood and do what's right for them. You've heard our request, and I don't think those requests need to fall on deaf ears. They can need to make the right decision here. And I appreciate all that y'all do. You know, Perry's a great place to live and raise kids, and, you know, we see that a lot of places, and you see that in magazines, you see in articles all over this state, and we want to keep it that way, and that's why we're fighting for this. Because we want Perry to stay the place that it is and not become a place that just caters to people that come in and make threats and threaten you with lawsuits. We've got great lawyers too for the city of Perry, and we need to let those lawyers fight for it, so if they're going to threaten us, we'll be in battle with lawsuits.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm Steve Brooks, working with the Tappy Development Partners. We're the applicant on the proposed 72-unit apartment complex. You know, our mission is providing quality houses, homes for birthday parties. So everybody has an opportunity to experience what all these passionate people here have. Perry, where Georgia comes together, not where you keep a wall to keep people out, to allow opportunity for other people to experience the benefits that they experience here, the residents of Perry. We're not building this to bring people in from Atlanta. We're not building this to bring people in from Savannah or New York City. As we presented in our previous presentations, our market study is, this is housing for people in Perry who are currently living in substandard conditions. It's housing for, give them quality housing that they can afford. You've seen a lot of evidence, the facts are the facts. I'm not going to stand up here and call anybody a liar. I'm not going to, you know, the traffic study was done by a qualified professional. You have a copy of it, you can look at his resume. He said what he said. Engineer gave y'all the report. We're going to reduce the stormwater runoff by 99% of existing conditions. Y'all saw a video of some terrible water conditions on a neighboring property, not this subject property, that is higher than this property. You've been told our property doesn't perk. We've never even done a perk test. This development is an opportunity to allow other people to experience the same thing that they cherish. They talked about too much multifamily. I don't know when the last multifamily development was built in that one-mile radius from where he's talking about. I don't have that data, but I know there's been a slew of single-family homes built. The proportion has swung out of balance, and we're just trying to bring it back into balance, allowing the opportunity for all different types of income levels and people to live on that site. But thank y'all for all your consideration. I appreciate all y'all's efforts, and I know this is not an easy decision for y'all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak?
My name's Denise Anderson.
Go ahead, please.
I live at 102 Oxford Court. We are not opposed to the project. We're opposed to the site of the project. We want to find someplace else in Perry where the traffic is more accessible, but the traffic in our area, we're not opposed to, we're not saying, you don't have to bring it about, does not fit that site. That is not a good site. And I think we're just.
My name's Wyatt Johnson. I live in one of the Cheshire places. Not this past year, but for three years across the years, I catered out the floor set of a housing, and we worked on people's houses who couldn't afford to make those repairs. One of the points that was just made that these apartments are being put there to provide for those who are living in substandard housing. We did over 50 projects, most of them in Perry. Not one of them could have afforded these apartments. So I'm not sure where the substandard housing that we're going to draw from is coming from.
Thank you, sir. I'm not, anyone else want to speak?
My name is Michael Russell, I'm a 112 window mirror. And with all due respect, my backyard is the only backyard that I have to do a birthday party, as well as most of the constituents that stood up here just a moment ago. So we're here, defending what I'm here for, our property rights. And you're the only venue that we have to help us protect. And I just ask that you do the right thing. Remember, this is our backyard, and we need your help.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Jean Berry, and I live in Gatwick Senior Apartments. We need some new senior apartments in Perry. And if you come over by my place and look at my backyard, you'll see one. There are tree limbs down that have been laying there for several months. There's a tree hanging over the fence, and I went out and tried to gather some of them up, and I'm recuperating from, you know, broken shoulders, so I'm not really able to do that, but I did get some up, but there's still a lot of them there. Our rent just went up. We got a $20-some raise, or went up $20-some dollars. What are we paying for? So, we need some new apartments by people that care what they look like, not just the front part, but they need to care the back part also. That's all I've got to say. Come look at it, see for yourself.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Council, your concurrence, and in deference to those who are here, I would like to modify the agenda and move item 7B to special exception application number 0001-2019 as the next item. Council concur to modify the agenda as suggested. Yes. Thank you. Under item 7B, this is a special exception. Application number 0001-2019. Mr. Wood?
The site that we're referring to is 1820 Macon Road, as shown here. It's 10.28 acres and a proposed site for a 72-unit multifamily development. This project went to the planning commission last month. The planning commission recommended denial of the request based on noncompliance with criteria number 5A relating to traffic and how it impacts the surrounding neighborhood. The staff recommends approval of the request. In reviewing the criteria, there are nine criteria. Item A is existing land use pattern. The proposed 72-unit apartment development is consistent with the existing land use pattern along Macon Road, as there are existing multifamily, single-family, and commercial uses in the area. Whether the proposed use will have an adverse impact or effect on the comprehensive plan, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan for 2017 as adopted. Whether all proposed structures, equipment, or material will be readily accessible for fire and police protection, both the city police chief and fire chiefs have indicated that they will be able to provide adequate service to the proposed development. Whether the proposed use will be such location, size, and character that in general, it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the area in which it is proposed to be situated and will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties or a detriment to the improvement of adjacent properties in accordance with design and classifications of such properties, the existing land use pattern, or the comprehensive plan. The proposed development of two and three-story buildings and the layout of the site plan, along with included conditions, will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties or a detriment to the improvement of adjacent properties. Whether, in the case of any use located in or directly adjacent to a residential district or area, the nature and intensity of operations will be such that both pedestrian and vehicular traffic to and from the use and the assembly of persons in connection therewith will not be hazardous or inconvenient to or incongruous with said residential district or area or conflict with the normal character of the, excuse me, normal traffic of the neighborhood. Traffic generated by the proposed 72-unit development will be similar to or less than many commercial uses that are permitted by right on the subject property. The location and height of buildings and other structures and the nature and extent of screening, buffering, and landscaping on the site will be such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development or use of adjacent land and buildings in accordance with the existing zoning district and development pattern. Proposed use with the proposed increase in setbacks and buffers will not hinder or discourage appropriate development and uses of adjacent lands. Whether the proposed use is, will increase the population density resulting in the increase or overtaxing of the load on public facilities such as schools, utilities, streets, et cetera, or approval of the use would be, or approval of the use would encourage adjacent areas to develop higher densities than provided in the comprehensive plan, resulting in the overtaxing of such facilities. Utilities, streets, and schools are adequate to accommodate the proposed 72-unit multifamily development. Whether the proposed use will cause a health hazard, a public health problem, or create a nuisance, will cause excessively increasing traffic and associated congestion, creating, create a drainage problem, generate unnecessary disturbance, huge noise, the emission of smoke or other contaminants, odor, electrical interference, cause, interference, cause pollution to land, air, and old water. With the included conditions, the proposed use will not create a drainage problem. Traffic generation is equal to or less than traffic generated by many of the uses permitted by right. Extensive building setbacks and buffers will guard against other unnecessary disturbances. Whether the proposed change will adversely affect property values in adjacent areas, no compelling evidence was provided showing an adverse effect on adjacent property values. In fact, the Winslow Place apartments existed before the houses, or many of the houses in Cheshire Place were constructed. Whether there are substantial reasons why the property cannot be used for permitted use in the district where the property is located. The property has remained undeveloped despite having been zoned for commercial and residential uses since the mid-1990s. Staff recommends approval with three conditions. The first condition being that the development of a multifamily residential development on the subject property shall substantially comply with the information provided by the applicant in this application for special exception, including the revised site plan. applicant in this application for special exception, including the revised site plan presented at the public hearing held on March fifth, two thousand nineteen, and dated March two thousand nineteen. Number two, stormwater management on site shall comply with the applicant's preliminary hydrology analysis upon design prepared by Don E. Carter, P.E., dated March fifth, two thousand nineteen. And number three, in place of the proposed six-foot, uh, wood privacy fence, the applicant shall install an eight-foot masonry privacy wall, excepted with, uh, masonry finish, a split face concrete block, brick, stone, or hardcover stuff over. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have of me.
Counsel, may I have any questions to Mr. Wood at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the request of special exception based on the criteria that's been outlined by Mr. Wood, and also subject to the conditions that are outlined by Mr. Wood, uh, that we'll follow through with.
I second the motion. As a motion and a second, immediate discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries three to two. Please let the record indicate Mr. Jones and Mr. Hunt. No. Motion carries. Thank you. We're voting.
We'll go back to our, uh, normal agenda at this time. Item six to review the minutes. Six A, council members, you've been provided with the minutes of March before two thousand nineteen work session, the March fifth, two thousand nineteen pre-council meeting, the March fifth, two thousand nineteen council meeting, and the March eleventh, two thousand nineteen special meeting. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept these minutes as presented.
Go move.
I have a motion and a second. Or is there any addition, deletion, or changes to these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Minutes were approved unanimously. Back to item seven, old business. Seven A is alcohol license application. Application, second reading and adoption. Seven A one is the second reading of an application for alcohol license. It will be beer and wine consumption on premises for Oliver Hazards LLC located at nine oh one Carroll Street. Manager's name is Robert Chadwick Evans the fourth. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. This is for, uh, a new venue for, uh, which is an outdoor venue, formerly known as Riden Park. I don't know if this one has a name. We've checked the application, all is in order, and, uh, I've signed it proven from the, uh, police perspective.
Any questions of Chief Lynn? Hearing none. This is the second reading, and it's time for action. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the alcohol license as outlined.
Go move.
As motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion approved unanimously. Item eight is any other new business? Eight A, the mayor's here, I do not have any, as Mayor Pro Tim. Eight B is council member items, Mr. Jones. Yes. Mr. Hunt? Mr. Jack? Yes. Mr. King? Yes. Thank you. And C is any old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Eight D is any old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any old business from the city attorney?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Item nine is new business. Item nine A of matters referred from our March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen work session and March nineteenth, uh, pre-council meeting. We have several items. Excuse me, nine A one is the authorized proceeding with the improvements of the Barburg Calhoun Park tennis courts as submitted by Parish Construction Company. I think you're doing that, aren't you?
Staff is recommending and requesting approval of the janitor's maximum price for the improvements to Barburg Calhoun Park in the amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Any questions of Ms. Gibson relative to the tennis courts? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve moving forward with construction from Parish Construction Company.
Go move.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion approved unanimously. Nine A two is a resolution to amend the city's travel expense policy. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Mayor Pro Tim and council, you have talked about your work session yesterday, some suggested amendments to the city's travel policy which affirms what our existing practices, and we would recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Any questions of Mr. Gilmore relative to this travel policy? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we accept staff's recommendation on this resolution.
Go move.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Resolution's approved unanimously. Item nine A three is to authorize establishment of an assistant director of leisure services. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Mayor Pro Tim and council members, uh, the administration is recommending that you will authorize it to proceed with the, uh, preparation of a job description for assistant director of leisure services. This would be in line with succession planning, and, uh, if you so approve, we will put one together, bring it back to you for your final approval action.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Do you have any questions of Ms. Gilmore relative to this position? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the establishment of an assistant director of leisure services.
Go move.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Resolu-, uh, this is authorized unanimously. Item nine B are awards for bids. Nine B one is bid number two thousand nineteen thirteen, the Creekwood-Rosier Park playgrounds. Mr. Worthington?
Uh, again, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and council, uh, the first bid that SAG is asking, uh, you guys still award tonight, is to purchase two playgrounds, uh, one for Creekwood Park and one for Rosier Park. For part of this bid solicitation, we directly contacted thirty-one vendors. Uh, we also posted this bid to the city of Perry's website and the Georgia Prepayment Registry. We received six responsive bids ranging from two hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars to three hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars. It is staff's recommendation that, uh, we award this bid to Great Southern Recreation in the amount of two hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Worthington? Mr. Worthington? Mr. Gilmore, the funding of this will come from?
SPOS eighteen.
Thank you. No questions. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the bid that has been outlined relative to Creekwood and Rosier Park playgrounds.
Go move.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. The bid is accepted unanimously. Bid nine B two is bid number two thousand nineteen nineteen, and it's for construction services on seven forty-one Main Street.
Thank you, sir. Uh, it's the second bid we're asking council to award tonight. Uh, as the Mayor Pro Tim said, this is for construction services at seven forty-one Main Street. Uh, we directly contacted twenty-nine vendors as part of this bid solicitation. Uh, it was also posted to the city of Perry's website and the Georgia Prepayment Registry. Uh, we received five responsive bids, and it is staff's recommendation that we award the bid to the low bidder, which was RJP and Associates Contractors Incorporated, uh, in the amount of two hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
What questions do you have? Mr. Gilmore, where will this be funded from?
It's to come from the general capital.
You've heard the recommendation from staff relative to bid two thousand nineteen nineteen. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid as recommended.
Go move.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. The bid is accepted unanimously. Ms. Worthington, it looks like you've got another.
One more. Uh, this is, uh, bid number twenty nineteen dash twenty-two for city park landscape maintenance. This would be the landscape maintenance, uh, contract for the new city park located at the former Cherokee Pines Golf and Country Club. Uh, once again, we directly contacted twenty-nine vendors as part of this bid solicitation and posted to our website and the Georgia Prepayment Registry. Uh, we received six responsive bids. Um, it is staff's recommendation that we award this bid to Allen Perk Landscaping in the amount of forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Any questions relative to this bid? Again, Ms. Gilmore, this will just come out of, what, funding?
This will come out of the general fund operating.
General fund operating. Thank you. Uh, you've heard the recommendation from staff relative to the city landscaping maintenance. At this time, I'll entertain a, a motion to accept the bid as outlined.
Go move.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthington. Item nine C are resolutions for consideration and adoption. Nine C one is a resolution to submit an application to the Department of Community Fairs for the two thousand nineteen community development block grant. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. This is a resolution, um, allowing us to submit an application for community development block grant, uh, for the two thousand nineteen funding round. We are, uh, requesting that grant, that, that grant request will be for a one million dollar, uh, grant, uh, for housing rehabilitation and street flood and drainage improvements, um, along Raleigh Street, Gordy Street, Stanley Street, Bear Street in the Creekwood neighborhood. Uh, this will, um, benefit approximately fifty-five households in that area. Uh, the city is committing to providing a hundred thousand dollars in funds towards the engineering and drainage improvements, and fifty-three thousand dollars in L-Meg funds for improvements to the streets. Um, we'll continue court code enforcement. Uh, we are proposing to waive permit fees for the rehabilitation, um, in that area, and, uh, we agree to maintain and abide by the requirements of the Fair Housing Act as of April. We recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there any questions of Mr. Wood relative to this, this application for two thousand Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution as submitted by the staff.
Go move.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Passed unanimously. So thank you. Nine C two is a resolution adopting updates to the urban redevelopment plan. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. This is a resolution to adopt the plan, uh, for redevelopment, um, for a redevelopment area. Um, this is an update of the two thousand eight plan that was done. Uh, the area includes the neighborhoods along Courtney Hodges Boulevard, downtown area, uh, the neighborhoods along Sam Nine, and also, um, along a portion of, uh, the Yeldon Field neighborhood, so goes into that area as well. Uh, the Middle Georgia Regional Commission prepared the plan, looking at all of our existing plans, comprehensive plans, strategic plan, and others, uh, to prepare this, and looking at how we can make improvements in the downtown area and make improvements in those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions of Mr. Wood relative to this urban redevelopment plan? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept it as been presented by Mr. Wood.
Go move.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Resolution was accepted unanimously. Nine C three is the selection of a voting delegate for the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia's annual election. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Mayor Pro Tim and council members in your packet is the information from Municipal Gas Authority for their annual election and meeting. Uh, we historically have had two representatives there. Currently, they are designated as Mayor Farrakhan and Council Member King, and we would recommend to you all to retain those two recipients.
One was the delegate, the other was alternate.
Yes.
Okay. So one can't go, so.
All right. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Gilmore relative to this? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the staff's recommendation of the delegates for the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia's annual election.
Go move.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. It is approved. Thank you. Nine D is the approval of traffic control proposed, proposal relative to the intersection of Kings Chapel Road and Keith Drive. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. Uh, we've discussed the problems of our traffic at that intersection, and we are recommending to you all that you authorize that to be set up as a four-way style.
What questions do you have relative to the four-way style? That's happening. Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal presented by Mr. Gilmore relative to Kings Chapel and Keith Drive.
Go move.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. It was accepted unanimously. Thank you. Nine E is approval of engineering consultant for the two thousand and nineteen CDVG program. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. This is a request to, um, the staff is recommending an approval of, um, GWES, Georgia Water and Environmental Services LLC of Perry, uh, to serve as the engineer for the two thousand nineteen CDVG grant. Um, we did, uh, solicit proposals for engineering services as required by the city and state procurement procedures. We did receive three, um, proposals, and those were evaluated, and our recommendation is to, to approve, uh, GWES LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions of Mr. Wood relative to the approval of this engineering consultant? Mr. Wood, I do have a question. And typically in our block grants, we don't have engineering service. Why are we electing to do that this time?
Because, uh, typically in our, the last, uh, CDVG applications that we submitted, they have been all for housing. Um, and so we've, we haven't had any engineering, um, issues, uh, but this time we are requesting that, uh, CDVG grant to, uh, to get money to help improve, uh, drainage issues and other engineering-related issues in this neighborhood. So, uh, we'd need an engineer to prepare, to evaluate the issues, uh, and prepare, um, construction drawings for, uh, to, to make those modifications, and then to oversee the modifications itself, the construction itself.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other questions of Mr. Wood relative to this proposal? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation from staff in naming this engineering consulting firm for two thousand nineteen block grant.
Go move.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. It's accepted. The approval was unanimous. Thank you. Counsel, would you please turn that air commission off?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll take care of that. And Mrs. Valen Grace is not here to complain about it. I see your head turned off an hour ago.
Oh, yeah. Nine F, consider approving jointly owned natural gas partnership becoming a commission. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim and council members in your packet is an outline we received from the jointly owned natural gas organization, indicating their intentions, subject to the partners agreeing to shift from a commission, uh, I'm sorry. sorry, from a partnership form to a commission form. This is something that the administration has been pushing for, for a number of years, and we would recommend that council approve the proposed restructuring. This is not to have the final, just that they commissioned go ahead with preparing a document for your, for our review.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Any questions of Mr. Gilmore relative to the jointly owned natural gas partnership becoming a commission? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation by staff on jointly owned natural gas partnership becoming a commission.
So moved.
As a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. It was approved unanimously. Thank you. Item 10 is other business for the supplemental agenda. 10 A is a special events application. Mrs. Heidi Myers?
Yes, Mayor Council. Our annual Free Truck Fridays are right around the corner. They are held on the second Friday of each month, with the exception of April, since we are going to start a month early because of the huge community support and feedback from last year. And that first one will be on April 5th due to Dogwood, the second weekend of April. So those dates are April 5th, May 10th, June 14th, July 12th, August 9th, and September 13th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Setup will begin an hour later this year, so it'll start at 3:00. And we are requesting road closures. Those road closures are Ball Street between Commerce and Main. The city parking lot at Main and Ball will still be accessible to the public. And then Carroll Street between Jerminigan and Washington, so the same layout as last year. We're also requesting the special event alcohol license for Bodega Brewin' Just Tapped. All of their information, their catering licenses, their insurances, and all of their alcohol licenses are also on file with the city for the year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions of Ms. Myers? Yes.
I may have misunderstood, but I heard her say 3:00 starting time?
No, sir. The road closures will begin at 3:00 for setup. Last year, we began at 2:00. So we are going to begin an hour later.
We had some feedback from merchants that we were closing the road too early, so we've moved it up to accommodate the sales.
Yes, we now have it down to a certain extent.
Vendors of 6:00 to 10:00?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Myers? Chief, you guys have, Chief Lynn, you've reviewed it. Chief Parker, you've reviewed it. You're okay with it?
Yes, sir. No problem.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special events application that has been outlined by Ms. Myers.
So moved.
The motion is second. All in favor? Raise your hand. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item 10 B is resolutions for consideration and adoption. 10 B one is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Georgia Department of Community Fairs under the Revitalization Area Strategies Program. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. As part of the update to the urban redevelopment plan, the regional, Georgia, Middle Georgia Regional Commission also undertook update to the revitalization area strategies. In 2016, council adopted a revitalization area strategy that only involved the Sandhill This revitalization area strategy will include Sandhill, Creekwood, Five Points, and New Hope for potential use of funding. So this is just requesting approval to submit the revitalization area strategy to DCA. It does indicate that the city will ensure that it meets its obligations under the Fair Housing Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions of Mr. Wood rather relative to the revitalization area strategy that's being submitted? Hearing none. I'll accept the motion. I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve the revitalization strategies program as outlined by Mr. Wood.
So moved.
As a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you. Resolution passes unanimously. Item 11 is council member items. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. Keen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, anything additional?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 12 is council, I'm sorry, department head items, starting over here with Ms. Keen. Mr. Wood, anything additional?
Yes, I do have two items quickly. First one is, as I mentioned earlier, for the public, we will have a spring cleanup day on Saturday, May the 4th, and we'll be doing things a little bit differently this year rather than going into the neighborhood. We'll be working on different streets in various council districts, and so we'll be getting out more information on that for advertising to the public and we will need volunteers. The second item I wanted to mention to you is that over the last couple of years, there've been a lot of new faces in the community development department, but I wanted to point out for you that back in January, Christine Sewell celebrated her 10-year anniversary with the city in that position as administrative assistant. And also Dan Bass marked his 20-year anniversary with the City of Perry, and he is our senior building official, or building inspector. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, anything from Public Works?
Yes, sir. One item. April 8th to 12th, the city and Public Works will be hosting its annual spring cleanup event, which is where, I guess essentially you can put anything out by the side of the road and we'll come pick it up. From tires and paint to just regular trash, if you're doing some spring cleaning, feel free to take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
There is a limit on the tires, right?
Four tires.
I could put all my biggest tractor tires.
It's four tires. I guess it could be four large tires. We don't specify.
We do have a limit of four tires, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Ms. Worthington, anything else this evening?
I think pretty much.
Ms. Spitz, anything? Help yourself. Thank you. Ms. Myers?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dine? Anything? Chief Lynn, anything additional?
No, sir. I'm good.
Chief Parker?
Nothing additional, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Harden, anyone?
No.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good one. Oh.
Thank you, but I don't have anything.
I appreciate it. Sorry.
That's okay.
I was trying to make sure I got everybody, so. Item 13 is general public items. Is there anybody that would like to address council at this time? Thank you. Item 14 are mayor items. The one item that I have is to remind everybody, we have Walk With the Mayor this month. We're starting it back up. We're doing something a little different this year. The Walk With the Mayor will be on the 26th of March, Tuesday afternoon, starting at 5:30, and we're going to do it at the Perry-Hoston County Airport. There'll be a tour of the airport. They're going to bring some of the aircraft that they house out there to let us look at them from some of the corporate jets to the smaller pieces of equipment. So we would ask everybody that would like to talk with mayor and council, we'll be out at the airport for that period of time and refreshments will be served. So we'd love to have everyone come and join us. If there's nothing else to come before us this evening, we will stand adjourned.